For August 10th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Caitlin Smith and Liz Poplowski of the Shrewsbury Media Connection, in addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30 and 330 and Facebook. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on Channels 30 and 330 from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting on August 24th, 2021. Tonight's meeting will also be available on YouTube, starting tomorrow, for your viewing pleasure. First item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
They've been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to approve minutes of July 27th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
They've been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is announcements, reports. Colleagues, anything? I just have a few announcements. We just taped our August edition of Selectmen's Roundtable. We had special guests, including Water Superintendent Dan Rowley, Jeff Howland of the Department of Public Works, and Paul Howard from TATA and Howard. And we talked about many water initiatives that we've talked about over the last few years relating to PFOS and Hex Chrome, and some information on the pilot programs that we've undertaken as a community, an update on unidirectional flushing, which we started back in October of 2019, and information about where we are with seven of 12 zones have been completed. And we also ended up with unaccounted-for water. So there's a lot of information that we ran through in 29 minutes, and please check it out. The few vacancies, just one, I've announced two out of these three in the last couple of meetings, but I think it's worthwhile, given there's still six days. Yeah, six days. So we have vacancy notice. We have the Affordable Housing Board of Trustees. We're looking for three qualified individuals interested in serving on this Affordable Housing Board of Trustees, excuse me. Interested parties must be residents of the town and are asked to submit a letter of interest and resume by Monday, August 16th, 2021. Information regarding who to send it to is on the Board of Selectmen's website, as well as the vacancy notice for Zoning Board of Appeals. We are looking for one qualified individual interested in serving on the ZBA to fill a vacant term set to expire on March 31st, 2022. This individual must be a registered voter of the town, and similarly, we're asked that you submit a letter of interest and resume via email to the address posted back on July and on our website. And then finally, a vacancy notice that we haven't talked about before. We have one for the Shrewsbury Cultural Council. We're seeking qualified individuals, and actually, one individual to serve on the cultural council. This is to fill out a remaining unexpired term that will end on February 2024. So thank you to all of those who have submitted letters of interest so far, and there is still plenty of time as well. If you're interested, we'd love to hear from you. So thank you. That's all I have for announcements and reports. Our next item is the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, board members, members of the public that are here, those watching at home. Just a couple of updates for the board this evening. First, I just wanted to reiterate, reinforce the situation with regards to the pays-to-throw bags within the community. Like many other sectors of the economy, we were impacted with our bag supply due to trucking shortages, shortages in trucking and transportation markets. Our manufacturer is located in South Carolina, and for a period of about three weeks ago, there was some dwindling supply within some retailers that actually ran out. Fortunately, the supplier was very proactive and shipped through a number of different common carriers and their own proprietary carriers, and were able to provide two weeks of stock by the end of the last week of July, and now has sufficient stock on hand in New England warehouses where our supplies are at normal level. So I do apologize for anyone that went to retailers who weren't able to get bags when they wanted to, but again, we're just dealing with the overall impacts in the economy and the transportation market, but we're back up to full speed at this point. So thanks to everyone for their patience. I just want to acknowledge the work of Chief Anderson and so many others within the command staff of the Shrewsbury Police Department and others in leadership positions throughout the town, various departments, who participated in National Night Out last week. I think it was a highly successful event. Sorry I couldn't be there. You know, we also held a COVID-19 vaccination clinic, which was successful, and several, or 24 vaccines were given out, so that's really a good thing still. So we're happy about that, and thanks to the community for coming out and participating and engaging with us in that setting. Just acknowledge the additional work that's going on right next door here at the police station. If anyone hasn't been down Maple Avenue recently, please take a drive-by. You can see your taxed dollars at work, and the construction of that new building as site clearing continues. And just to share with the board that we've received notice from the Commonwealth that they are going to now distribute the non-functioning county portion of our American Rescue Plan Act funding, starting on August 16th, and that is the larger portion of the distribution. And it will total approximately $7 million through that allocation, which is a per-capita allocation here for the town. And it also, so at the end of our first tranche, which we'll have in hand once we receive that, we'll have about $5,750,000 on hand. Now that we are assured that we're actually going to get those funds, we will develop a plan for working with the board to prioritize the various areas for spending and put a plan in place, like many other communities are, that you may be reading about in the papers. So that's the end of my general manager report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Next item is coronavirus, COVID-19 report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Samia. Since the board's last meeting, there have been 47 additional COVID-19 positive cases reported. That's since June 27th. We are, continue to be in a bit of an upswing after a spring and early summer lull. We've experienced 19 cases within the last seven days, so we have made some changes. Employees are now required to wear masks in the town hall and common areas. We're consulting with the Public Health Director and the Board of Health as to other changes that we may be making in public buildings and other places where the public gather here in the future. So with regards to the vaccines, there are 345 individuals who received their first dose and 265 individuals who received their second dose since last reported on July 27th. That takes the total residents with at least one dose to 73 percent and fully vaccinated to 67 percent.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Next, we'll go to time-scheduled meetings. Next item on the agenda is a time-scheduled meeting with David Snowden, DPW Business Manager, and Natasha Cormier, DPW Administrative Assistant regarding DPW outreach projects. Good evening.
You take them off when we talk?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Welcome.
Good evening. How is everyone? All right. David Snowden, DPW Business Manager and-
Natasha Cormier, Administrative Assistant.
Within the Business Management Division. And we're here excited to talk to you, to the board, about some DPW outreach projects we have in the works. As a part of Natasha's performance, employee performance goals or goal work for the fiscal year, she's been working on a number of projects to increase the engagement and our ability to connect with the community. We're going to go through the three of them. The first is a mailer, and then we'll go into the two different contests we have afterwards. And if you have any questions, please, we can address them as we go on.
Is there anything else you wanted to mention on those two?
No.
All right. We have a lot of support, you know, in the team by having multiple people up here. It's good. All right. So about a year ago, it was pertinent for us to figure out how to better connect with the community, what engagement methods we had needed to change, and we needed to find new ways to provide service. Being relevant is extremely important. It's not common to see people in the grocery store surfing the town's website. There's probably lots of other websites that they find more enjoyable, but that doesn't mean that can't happen. We just need to become relevant and connected with our community, and that means that our content needs to be fresh and, again, relevant to what the citizens and residents want. And it's the small steps and changes that help us get there, or at least that's what we believe will really help with the DPW. So the first item was developing a mailer for the residents to provide some more information on the updated sewer rate increase and some other pertinent information regarding water leak information, water conservation supplies that the town can help provide, and then the actual fee schedule as well, and then lastly, the contest information. And the hope was to get this out to residents, have one more means in which we reached out, in addition to the social media and news flashes. This mailer could be something that residents could hold on to, hopefully, and might spark some other questions, and then there is information for them to reach out to the town if they are so interested. We had solicited some quotes, and we are able to move forward with the production and mailing of this within about a two-week period, and we just wanted to see if there was any information from the board that you thought would be helpful to have in here or anything that we wildly missed the mark on. And that would be probably the first thing that would be good for us to go through, and then we could move on to the other items.
Do you want comments or questions? Any comments or questions?
That'd be great. I've talked enough, all right.
On the pamphlet?
I will just say that, as you know, David, because I reached out to you pretty quickly, to tell you that I thought it was very well done. I specifically liked the information on the leaks, things that I would not have necessarily thought of, and also about Unipay, which I thought was only for people that were having their accounts at Unibank. So I think it would definitely probably clear up some misconceptions for others as well in the community. So I do applaud the effort, any effort to connect better with residents and make the information more accessible and easy to access, I think is always a plus. So thank you for doing this work. It's very much appreciated. I'd be interested to know what the response is that you get from the community when it is mailed out.
Great. Thank you. Happy to share.
Anyone else? I just have one question or comment on the, I think it's great. I think it's a lot of information consolidated in a pretty easy-to-read format. Under fee update for residential slash condo, is that per 1,000 gallons? Just on the-
Correct.
So maybe just to clarify.
I misspoke. I apologize. The first tier is zero to 5,000 gallons, so it's a per 1,000 gallons for that individual tier.
Understood.
We can make that more clear, yes.
So someone doesn't, just because below, it's a small point, but just so then, okay. I think it's really good.
And we've already, we thought it was still pertinent to also write sewer fee update just so there was no other confusion, and we're also going to include the meter, the meter charge information as well, even though it mirrors water. We'll make sure we have that in there as well.
Anything else? John, you're still above, sir.
I just wanted to comment, though I tend to gravitate towards text, I think the infographic, I guess that's what we call this, is very effective, and I think it's an excellent way to communicate a lot of information in a very accessible fashion, and I think it's something we should probably be doing more of as much as we possibly can in various areas, because it does seem people like their information fast.
Thank you for the positive feedback.
Well, with that, we're happy to go into the next two projects. There are two contests that we are working on, and we're hoping that would be able to be rolled out and completed by the end of September. The first one is focused on increasing the town's Unipay enrollment and general utility account information. The Business Management Division, with the support of the Water Sewer Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, have been really working hard to reach out to residents, make sure we have accurate meter readings and good equipment in place. And while we've made some significant strides, we've also found that there is lots of accounts where we don't have good information on individuals, and, you know, we've done mailings, and that has helped, but we're hoping with this type of contest, which has an incentive of free trash bags, we may be able to get more members enrolled with Unipay and update our account So there is some contest terms, and one of the, that was included in the brief, but essentially, what we'd be doing is we'd allow, there would be 10 total winners, but residents would have until September 30th to enroll with Unipay, confirm account information with the DPW, and then sign up for C Click Fix. There's three actionable items in order to meet the terms for the contest. And then, we would then, the following week, we would draw the winners. The first two winners would be 10 large rolls and 10 small rolls, and then it ratchets it down by two rolls of each size for each subsequent winner. But we also want to make sure that we have some other terms in here, making sure that the, it's the, the individual who's on the account is the one that's also setting up some of these, so we don't have a number of individuals from one home signing up. So those are some items we've considered, and we think that it could be quite successful in proving our enrollment and account information.
And any comments or questions to that?
Are Selectmen eligible to win?
Well-
Hopefully, you're logged on to Unipay already.
Yeah. There is, town employees are not eligible, and I think-
I'm joking.
I know, I know. But now that we're on TV, we want to make sure it's clear, right?
Very tempting.
Yes. All right.
I just had one quick thought, so I'll defer to you guys, but any thought to splitting it in half? So September 30th, those, maybe splitting the prizes in half? So anyone who's eligible will be September 30th, get one of each, and then maybe another one October 31st, and that they can carry forward? Just that my only thought is, if people don't sign up by September 30th, then that's it. So with folks coming back from vacation, I don't know if we'll catch as many, and it may give a second month incentive for people to coming up, but using the same number of bags. Trash bags are a hot commodity, as Ms. Mizikar was talking about earlier, so you need to protect those trucks. So just a thought. I'll defer to you, but I just didn't know if, if you didn't get the numbers you wanted in September, it's just a thought to do a second part of it, but I'll, just a-
I think that's-
We could always do another one in six months or a year.
Or do a second one with the same number of bags.
Like in the spring or something like that. I think it's a great idea. It may allow residents to actually recognize that this is real, we really are doing it. I think that's, we'll definitely look into that and see how we can roll something like that out. Just wanted to also make clear, any residents who are already signed up or have already completed this on their own accord will also be entered, so it's not going to preclude anybody that is already enrolled in Unipay and C Click Fix as well. All right. Just got to take a note real quick. All right. And then the, the other contest is a logo design contest for the DPW. The DPW was formed from all the different divisions in 2018, and a lot of significant improvements have happened under the umbrella of the DPW and our leader, Jeffrey Howland. And we're hoping that this project here would encourage the next generation of residents to be interested in town work. Not, that doesn't mean that they're all going to be applying for every job that we have, but they want to know what's going on, and they care. They want to be proud of having a logo that they've worked on, and that's truly what the design behind this is, like, is to have more residents understanding the work that goes on on a day-to-day basis. We would be willing to answer any questions, set up-
Open houses.
Open houses, if available, you know, all things considered with current health concerns, but we want, that's what we want to engage, and the intent would be, it would have a similar timeframe. We would let the students reach out to us. There would be a five-member team consisting of Jeffrey Howland, Angela Snell, Natasha, an employee from the School Art Department, and we would also, would like to extend it to one person from the board to be on this, the voting team to review the logos and help us determine the winning prize. We're also hoping that the $500 scholarship would also encourage some students to also be involved. It's open to any high school-age student within the town of Shrewsbury, not just Shrewsbury Public Schools, but, you know, this could be the first foothold for somebody to really feel like they're a part of the community, and that's what we're hoping for. And the, again, the intent would be to have this logo present on the town's website. It's not intended at all to replace the town seal. That's not what we're going for. We're just trying to have a, we want to define the umbrella that DPW is under with this town seal, so we could, yeah, that's it.
I think it's a nice idea, Mr. Snowden, words that you talked about before about being relevant or fresh or connecting. I think it's a great way to get young people involved with our community. The, so I think it's a really neat thing, and we have a lot of talented kids in our community. The only comment I have under copyright, just if we're looking for the students to assign copyright in the logo, that anyone under 18 will have to get a parent consent.
Okay.
Just to keep that in mind. But other than that, I think it's a great idea. Any questions or comments?
Sounded like a lawyer.
Sorry. I play one on TV.
I think it's a great idea, and obviously, you're working this in conjunction with the High School Art Department.
Correct.
You can, want to speak to that, the work you've done with-
So I've reached out to Dr. Sawyer, and the, they've reached out to the art director, the department head at Shrewsbury High School, so she can give word to her students as well as posting it in the library newsletter, senior newsletter in case they have grandchildren, the community newsletter, and the school newsletter. So we're trying to reach out to as many facets as possible to get a lot of entries and just get the community involved.
Sounds good.
Yep. Yeah, we, the COA, which hopefully the grandparents can encourage their grandchildren to sign up and design a logo as well.
Quick question.
I think it's all good stuff. Anyone else?
Will you also be sending any information to other schools that high school student, high school-age Shrewsbury students might be attending, such as St. John's and Asabat and Amza, or is it you keeping it just to Shrewsbury High School?
We, the intent is not to just keep it as Shrewsbury High School, but residents within the town of Shrewsbury of high school age. So we would be posting it online, but it would seem reasonable to also be reaching out to the correct art departments in those schools as well to make sure that they are aware of the contest, yes.
Mr. LeBeau?
I just want to commend you on the Business Management Team and the whole Public Works Division on things that we don't normally do. I mean, we don't generally run contests. I think, I don't think it's an idea that would have occurred to be, but I think it's excellent. I think the first one about signing up a Unibank, I mean, let's try to alter behavior and with a carrot rather than a stick, and, I mean, we've all seen vax millions and all the things like that going on, so I think folks should realize they have much better odds of getting $167.50 worth of trash bags than a million dollars. I hope they, I hope they enter both, both lotteries, by the way, both contests, and to reach out to the young people to establish, well, first of all, a sense of community pride. It really starts there, and then, as you mentioned, recognition of all the elements that go into DPW. So I just, you know, commend you for, I mean, I realize this, others have probably had this idea, but I commend you for bringing it forward and developing it, you know, on a Shrewsbury perspective. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Mizikar? Any thoughts or comments?
I just want to commend Dave and Natasha for all their work they've done on this and all the things they do on a day-in, day-out basis, so if you have any concerns for DPW, likely, you know, you could reach Dave or Natasha, you know, with any questions on your billing or anything else like that, so we appreciate all the hard work that they provide to the community on a day-to-day basis, and thanks for these great ideas. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's a great report. One other word, too, that comes to mind, is just being responsive and very responsive to the community's needs as questions arise. We get as much information out there as possible in a digestible format, and that's not easy. A lot of this is complicated, so great work on your part, and thanks for coming this evening. It's a nice presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is another time-scheduled meeting, meeting with Christopher Roy, Selco General Manager, and Jackie Pratt, Selco Director of Integrated Resources and Communications, to discuss the recently adopted power supply policy that provides a roadmap to 100% carbon-free power by 2032 for Selco. Good evening.
Hello.
And welcome. How are you? Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us. Yeah, I guess if I'll jump right into it. Again, I'm Chris. This is my first meeting, so very nice to meet everyone for the first time. It's a pleasure to be here. I'll go right into our latest Selco Power Supply Policy that is kind of setting the stage for the presentation here. So basically, as folks in this room are perhaps more familiar than I with a lot of legislation going on in recent times, S9 was the latest one, and so really, as we evaluate the evolution of Selco to keep pace with probably the most change the utility sector has seen ever, is to really, I guess, to steal the phrase that was just used, to be responsive to the community, to be a key contributor to state objectives, and to be a leader in the utility space. And so as we approach the evaluation of how we conduct business on a regular basis, those are kind of the key concepts in our minds. And so the latest power supply policy is our attempt to achieve those three goals and kind of set the stage for our portion of climate advancement and net-zero emissions. And so that, that's the next slide, if you please. And so that's the premise behind this. So really, it's to show, you know, Selco has been a leader for a long time, and again, as the rules and regulations and benchmarks and metrics change, we need to also adapt along with it. So you'll see the first bullet point here, the 2020 baseline, 37% carbon-free power is where we're starting with in our current method of operations. And so in the power supply policy, we're outlining different mechanisms that we can implement that meet the regulatory guidelines and hit these targets in an accelerated manner that's also balancing the fiscal responsibilities that we're obligated to provide to the folks that utilize our services. And so, again, in the interest of time, you know, the brief overview for how that's achieved is a combination of two different things. One, it's our energy procurements, which you'll see in this table here, but it's also a combination of the renewable energy certificates. And for those that might be watching that don't deal in recs on a regular basis, basically, if you think of a renewable energy resource such as solar, wind, hydro, and others, that not only are you delivering the electricity in today's markets, but you're also delivering a certificate that symbolizes the environmental attribute of that asset. And so by entering into agreements that both accelerate our energy procurement as well as our benchmarks by participating in these certificate exchanges and retirements. And so that's what we- And so that's where you see our 2020 goal, and then further and beyond in the chart, that by utilizing those two methodologies, we accelerate that pace. So if you could, you'll see in the second bullet point here, the 5% each year, year over year, and with the idea ultimately by 2032 to reach 100% net zero. Why that's important, and, you know, there's a variety of reasons, but probably the most salient points is, you know, most folks are familiar with the overall 2050 goals, you know, established by the state and perhaps beyond. And so if we're all progressing as a heating, as a transportation sector, as an energy sector, and trying to all arrive at 2050 independently, it's going to be a pretty large uphill battle. And so really, the only mechanism to achieve large progress in achievement of these aggressive goals is to have a foundation that is non-emitting by nature. And so you're not going to eliminate carbon from gasoline, you're not going to eliminate carbon from coal or gas, but rather you need to implement these other renewable sources that electricity provides, and then shift these technologies such as gas-powered cars or heating systems to the electricity platform that is then powered by a renewable resource. And so that's our plan for accelerating that pace, you know, ahead of these other sectors to give them a platform to transition to over time. And so that's where you'll see some of those benchmarks. So the key question that everyone asks is, well, how much does that kind of cost? And so here are some of the cost comparison charts that we use in a variety of our materials to highlight how public power and Selco in particular are particular noteworthy leadership in the utility space. So you can see, just even without looking at the little numbers that you probably can't see above the bars, we are substantially lower than your investor-owned sector that most folks are familiar with because they have the majority market share. But you'll find that Selco is a leader in this, but also our peers are not far behind. So those blue graphs there indicate that our business model and our efficiency of management have resulted in substantial savings in energy over the history of the organization. And so adding to that, you can see the bar on the left, if you can't see the numbers necessarily, but that's Selco in 2021 at $91.37. And then Selco in 2032, 2032 being the 100% net zero target year, is only $5 more. So, you know, that, there's a caveat there where, you know, over that time span, again, there's a lot of change. You just have to think about how much change has happened over the last decade, but with current market conditions and our projections, you know, that we anticipate that that's a reasonable ballpark figure to benchmark against. And then just for, again, more benchmarking, as you can see, to add some data behind the statements, you can see towards the bottom there, Selco 2021 is the lighter blue color.
Darker blue.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Fifth from the bottom.
Yeah, oh, thank you, fifth from the bottom. And then with some of these procurement activities, that this is, should our peers not change, which is not possible given the regulatory environment, that's where Selco would fall, should we just do this and no one else do anything. So still very respectable with respect to efficiency of operations and procurement. But again, you know, the reality of things is all of those bars will change, so it's likely our standing won't change that much. And so with that, if you would allow me, I would turn this over to Jackie to just discuss some of the customer partners.
Sure. So one of the driving factors behind this accelerated approach, you know, in addition to the environmental things that Chris has pointed out, the state's goals and the reality that the electric utility sector needs to be sort of the bedrock foundation for all of these other sectors transitioning to carbon-free. We've really taken a look at what our customers want. Every couple of years, we do a customer satisfaction survey. It's conducted for us by Grape Blue Research, so we have an independent third party do this for us. And we got some preliminary results. I believe the survey just wrapped up, but these numbers are not reflective of the full data set. This is as of July 14th, before the full survey was closed out, and the trends were showing that 66% of customers want us to be somewhat or very aggressive in reducing carbon emissions, and that's notably up from 48% in our 2019 survey. And then we asked customers how quickly they want us to get to carbon-free, and we were surprised to see that 31% of customers want us to get there by 2035 or sooner. So with our roadmap to 2032, we are meeting and exceeding customer expectations on that front. Overall, customers do value our environmental approach here. 96% of customers believe we effectively balance environmental stewardship and fiscal responsibility. 69% believe we're doing enough today to reduce emissions. And 79% say it's very or somewhat important for us to promote environmentally conscious practices, and that one's up, excuse me, from 75 in 2019, so that's increased as well. So Chris, if you want to, next step, sorry, can you do that?
Oh, please.
Okay, so in terms of the net zero plan, that's for the utility to provide net zero electric service to all of our customers, but what can the town of Shrewsbury do from the municipal perspective? Right now, you have an MVP plan, which is, I believe, a municipal vulnerability. Preparedness plan, there we go, there's the P. And we believe that establishing a municipal climate action plan to complement that is a good first step. Focusing on electrification of new and existing buildings, incorporating solar and battery backup, electrification of vehicles, that would be your fleet vehicles, looking at both plug-in hybrid and full battery. And from the economic development perspective, an energy best practices checklist would be helpful for new construction, establishing building and zoning codes designed to encourage emissions reduction, establishing policies and guidelines for all boards, committees, and commissions that encourage energy-efficient and emissions-reducing technologies, and tax incentivization for electrification. So, for example, reducing excise taxes for new EVs. Might be a good, a good project, so.
Exactly. So I guess just the summary of that is essentially tying back to the beginning is the electricity sector is the foundation for the rest of these activities. We don't control what decisions necessarily people make with their home heating systems. We can't force you to buy a certain type of vehicle or build a certain type of building. I mean, those are all jurisdictional for people's either private decisions or other, you know, municipal and city departments. And so that's where we're trying to provide that baseline and then, you know, leverage our rate-making and rebate abilities to then help folks make those right decisions and participate in the programs we offer.
So, you know, theoretically, if a homeowner had an electric heating system, electric vehicles, and had no fossil fuel use within their home, by 2032, they would be themselves carbon-free. So transitioning in all of these different areas is important for everyone.
Question. Mr. DePaulo.
Pretty interesting. It'd be interesting if everything stays on track so we can do it. Who knows what's going to happen in the world, but I think it's the right direction. But I have a question. We get asked quite regularly, and you probably do too, people want to know if there's any incentives to put solar on their roofs. Is part of your plan to do something with that over the next few years?
So we actually offer a solar incentive today. You can get $1.20 per watt installed, up to $12,000 rebate for residential solar. We're getting tight on funding for that for this year. We're looking to potentially roll it out again in 2022. But we offer that incentive today. We also offer net metering, so if you're generating more solar than you're using your home and essentially running the meter backwards, we're paying you for that on your bill.
But is that, it's like when you go through MassSave or whatever, is MassSave a more aggressive plan?
I'm not particularly familiar how it compares. I think it's pretty comparable.
Okay. I always like to believe that, you know, the investor utilities, investor-owned utilities were more aggressive on it.
Well, to that point, I don't know if you're probably going to say the same thing. I am. But, you know, the investor-owned utilities have a surcharge on their bill, which goes into a fund that pays for those things. Selco's doing those things with no surcharge, no surcharge on your bill, and with the fifth lowest cost for power in the state of Massachusetts. You saw all those IOUs at the top of the list when we showed you that blue bar chart, so I think we're doing A-OK.
That's a good point. Thank you. Any other questions?
You can go first.
Mr. Mizikor.
I just want to commend you both for your efforts on this. I think it's amazing. It's a wonderful thing to be, to, you know, be able to support the community. You know, the Board of Selectmen always talks about, you know, creating ways for people to thrive. This not only helps the environment, but it helps, you know, individuals maintain a low-cost utility and, you know, be part of the solution. So I just want to commend you and the commission for all your efforts to really put Selco in the lead on this initiative in the Commonwealth and among investor, or public power, not investor-owned utilities. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. This is Cassavan.
Yeah, thank you. So there's always so many reasons, I think, to be really proud of Selco and the service that you provide to the community, but I think it was just yesterday, it feels like every day there's bad news, but that the IPCC came out with their report on climate change, and if we wait until 2050 to do something, it's going to be too late. I have a 15-year-old daughter who's been telling me for years that, you know, we're all going to be dead in seven years because of climate change. You know, we talk a lot about what can we do in our home and how it's not enough to stop using plastic wrap and not using straws and all of the small steps that we take. And I spend a lot of time talking to her about how it has to be the corporations and the companies and the power companies, and those are the people, the legislators, that are going to be able to make the changes that we need on such a large scale so that you see measurable change. And so this is exactly the kind of thing that I'll be going home and talking to her about, because it matters not just to, I think, the people that are listening at home, but also the future generation that I know is extremely concerned about what our future holds if we aren't taking really big, broad, measurable, bold steps in acting with a sense of urgency to really address the climate crisis. So I do thank you for this, and I really do appreciate the way in your meeting that you explained sort of how the offsets work and how it is that, you know, we're able to purchase, I think you call them RECs, right, from places that are far off, but that it ends up bringing our, it brings us to the net, to net zero. And I can't explain it as well as it was done in your meeting, but it did make sense to me finally, so I do appreciate that, and I thank you for the work that you're doing and the commission as well.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. LeBeau.
Well, first of all, it's fast. Just congratulations and thank you. Occasionally, I kind of got fixated on certain slides and might not have listened as carefully as I did, so forgive me if you've said this. And it's not, in some ways, it's important what others do, in some ways, it's not important what others do, but I am curious, are other, and did you, are other public power munis in Massachusetts undertaking similar, you know, goals and similar programs?
Sure, yeah. Slow and steady gaining momentum. There are, out of, so again, just as a couple of statistics, out of the 351 cities and towns, 41 have their own municipal utilities like Selco. Of the 41, I mean, just off the top of my head, I can think of half a dozen or so that have this type of timeline with others under consideration.
Terrific. Thank you.
This move for sure puts Selco as a leader, and to Beth's point, you know, we want to model the systemic change that we need to be seeing, and hopefully we'll have other munis follow along with us, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
You know, it's pretty neat, in the public sector, actually getting ahead of the private sector in the sense that the public markets for public companies, you've seen a big upshot in grading of companies that are traded on NASDAQ, the stock exchange, based on, you know, governance and social responsibility and environment, yet in Shrewsbury, we're ahead of them all. And two short years ago, it was, well, this is what advisory services, it's something for them just to make them relevant, but it's been a tremendous push, and we're ahead of that. So just want to recognize you for just the thoughtfulness and being proactive on this. You know, it goes back to what Mr. Snowden was talking about, being responsive. You look at the percentages of what our customers ask for, and we've exceeded it. We hear them, we listen to them, and we hear them socially responsible. And I think, as I look at the town of Shrewsbury recommended next steps, we're talking about strategic planning, and this I envision would be an important part of that. This really sets forth who we are as a community, not only for Selco, but it's really, what's our legacy? What do we leave the next generation of residents, not only in town, but also the Commonwealth and the world? So I think this is a great report. It's 18 years ahead of the Commonwealth, and as Ms. Pratt said, we can set the example as you've presented to us tonight and look forward to seeing how this develops. So thank you for your presentation and your leadership here. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
Next item on the agenda is also a time-scheduled meeting, meeting with representatives from Many Rivers LLC regarding an application to negotiate a recreational marijuana delivery operator host community agreement.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Chairman, by virtue of my position heading an agency that has significant authority relative to cannabis in Massachusetts and my seat on the advisory board to the Cannabis Control Commission, I'm going to recuse myself to a moment of conference.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome, if you could introduce yourself.
Certainly. My name is Rob Perlman.
And I'm David Rupinovitz.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to give you an overview of Many Rivers, a marijuana delivery operator. We'll do our best to answer your questions and listen to any concerns. We are here to ask for the opportunity to negotiate a host community agreement. So what is home delivery? Well, early in 2021, Massachusetts approved marijuana delivery licenses. There are two types of delivery licenses. First, the delivery courier. They work with a licensed marijuana retail establishment and receive a delivery fee, similar to food delivery services. They do not own or control inventory. The other is what we're seeking, the delivery operator license. Simply put, we purchase products from licensed marijuana establishments, cultivators of plants or product manufacturers of edibles, concentrates, et cetera. We warehouse these products, and we accept qualified orders through an internet platform, and then we deliver the orders directly to customers. So why Shrewsbury? Well, first rule of real estate, location, location, location. Centrally located, close to a major population center, in good proximity to multiple major highway systems. Another reason is that Shrewsbury is willing to consider a host community agreement request. Add to that, we found an available location with a landlord willing to lease to a marijuana establishment. Also, Shrewsbury has comparatively decent real estate costs and insurance rates. And finally, Shrewsbury is a reasonable distance from our homes, so we can be responsive at all hours if necessary. Our proposed location is 299 Hartford Turnpike, the corner of Route 20 and Grafton Street, near Flynn's Gas, Brody's Diner, and adjacent to Sperry Liquors. Municipal revenues that you can expect. Sales tax, the 3% local tax option. The host community receives the sales tax from all sales of a delivery operator, no matter what location the product is delivered to in the Commonwealth. Community impact fees are another 3%, which are based on the gross revenue amount calculated as the full retail price plus delivery fees. And on vehicle excise tax, we expect our vehicles will be registered as garaged in Shrewsbury, thus generating. Shrewsbury, thus generating some meaningful excise tax revenue. As for community impact, we believe our community impact is minimal. We are very different than a dispensary. First, walk-in business is not allowed at a delivery operator. None. Zero. There is limited traffic at our site, our staff and vendors, or others conducting official business. Basically, we have no unplanned visits. As for noise or odor, our facility should not generate noise or odor problems, just normal business sound levels, and we work only with sealed, packaged, shelf-stable products. So no odor involved in that. Our team, well, myself, I'm a lifelong resident of Massachusetts, and my education was local as well. I've over 40 years of business experience, and I've been entrepreneurial pretty much my whole life. I've been involved in multiple industries, many in new and developing areas, which this business certainly is. I'm a certified social equity program participant with the Cannabis Control Commission. I am a proud resolutionary. A resolutionary is a person with both the purpose and attitude leading to fair and positive outcomes. David?
Thank you. My name's David Rabenowitz. I am, I got into the marijuana sector in 2010 totally by accident. I moved out of state for a period of time, take a job in New York. When I came back in 2017, 18, that timeframe, I decided to jump in full-time. We were, my partner and I, were the business trainers for the Cannabis Control Commission Social Equity Training Program. Was the former treasurer and board member for the Massachusetts Cannabis Reform Coalition. I mentor and coach a number of the social equity candidates around the state who are trying, working on getting a license. And I also co-host a cannabis business radio show on, a weekly show. Back to you.
Okay. I'm fortunate to have David, his knowledge and experience in the industry on my team. I would not be doing this otherwise because my experience has taught me that an entrepreneur's job is to put, build the best team possible to achieve the goals and to deliver the needed resources to get the job done. I believe together, David and I make a strong team. We have established professional relationships. Our legal is Blake Mensing Esquire. Our insurance is going to be handled by Charles River Insurance Brokerage. Banking, we are planning to use Northern Bank. We believe we have a solid plan and a capable management team to execute the plan. Our success will deliver the town revenue from sales tax, community impact fees, excise, and personal property taxes. We plan to employ locals, and we pledge to be responsive to any and all issues brought to our attention. You have our application materials that give you greater depth. So why don't we move to questions, and I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, any questions?
You can go first, Beth.
I need to think for a minute.
Sorry?
I need to think for a minute.
All right, I have a few questions then. If I may, so thanks for the materials. They're pretty fulsome, so I appreciate it. Just in terms of going forward, the ownership, understanding that Mr. Perlman and the materials here are at 51% of the voting interest, the, would you both be managing members, or how is that going to work? In one part, it said one, or is that the anticipated? Because I know you're looking at potentially doing, have investment after the fact. So how would you see this playing out?
Rob will be, Rob is the 51% owner. And then I will have a piece, and that'll be subject to how much we have to allocate for an investor. We've had discussions with investors, a professional firm that invests in marijuana businesses. Most investors in the state who actually understand the process want to see a team achieve a host community agreement before they get into any major discussions. Though, I'm highly confident that once we get to that level, we will have an investor. Does that, is that answering your question?
Yeah, do they usually, just to take that one step further? Yes, it does. Thank you. In terms of any future investors would come in voting, or do they have a non-voting class, or have you thought that far?
We haven't gotten that far. The folks we're thinking of, I suspect, will stay at the 9.99% level.
Okay, so they're not?
You're familiar enough with it. I don't, okay, I won't go into it with that.
No, if you wouldn't mind, actually, for people walking in and out.
Sure. So under the Cannabis Control Commission regulations, an owner who has 10% or more is considered to be a controlling party. And you can only be a controlling party in three licenses in a particular class. For delivery, it's two licenses in a class. And because these folks happen to invest in a lot of firms, might, I suspect, what they're going to want to do is stay at the 9.99% level. Because once they hit 10, they're limited to just, they can only invest in two licensees at 10% or more.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can I follow up?
Mr. DePaulo, please.
So if we enter an agreement with you, whenever in the next, how long would that take? Okay. We're not going to know who the other investors are?
We have absolutely zero problem in having a provision in there that when we bring in another party who's going to have an equity stake, that we have to come before the board, and you have the opportunity to vet them.
That would be the only area I would support it.
Yeah, we'd no problem with that.
The service area, how big a service area are you anticipating?
Well, by license, we can cover the entire state, but by...
Business model?
Right. By business model, I suspect we're going to look, I wouldn't measure it in miles as much as I'd measure it in time, right? Because...
Okay. However, just trying to get a sense of...
Let's say within 40 minutes.
Okay. You could only drive to the other side of Worcester and Rush hour, unfortunately. Okay. It gives us a fair assessment. Are you going to be oriented, or you don't know, I was going to say, are you going to be more oriented east? Which 40 minutes is a lot different than going west. I'm just curious, you must have some kind of a plan.
Here's our understanding, I'm not trying to be coy, but I also, you know, we're in a public setting. We have a prospective relationship with a firm that I believe could generate a fair amount of leads for us. And under the Cannabis Control Commission regulations, they're not classified as a third-party technology platform provider, which it brings, if they were a third-party technology platform provider, which most folks who have large internet websites are, you can't have an exclusive-type relationship with them. We believe that that relationship will drive traffic to the site. We're cognizant of the fact that even, we're not, the model is not to send out a driver like a pizza delivery. They make the, they deliver the order, and then they come back, and then they get another one. That's highly inefficient, especially when you consider you have to have two people in the car, you have to have a body camera, the cars, the vehicle has to be outfitted a certain way. And when you take all those costs in, it's probably $20 odd dollars, in the low twenties, per delivery, just for your cost to the vehicle and the staff. Hence, our model is looking at not somebody who says, "I want it right now," like a pizza, but somebody who is a regular user. And they plan ahead, they place the order, hopefully, typically, they'll want it, let's say, within a day or two, and we can schedule the route. So the vehicle goes out, and it's out for probably six to eight, six to seven hours before it comes back. Everything works according to plan. They'll come back around 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock, we have a shift change, and then another group will go out. I think in the materials we provided to you, we explained, according to the commission regulations, we can deliver from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So if the drivers leave, let's say around 7:00, 7:30, to get to the first stop by 8:00, and then they complete the route, they come back, the second team has to complete their last delivery by 9:00 PM. And just for, I guess, the public's benefit, if we get to a home, if we get to, we can only deliver to residences, and there are residences we can't deliver to, that's hut housing, universities, it's defined in the regulations. If we get to somebody's house, and the husband made the order, as an example, and he's not home, we can't leave it with the wife. We can only hand it to the person whose name is on the order. If they call in, because they got to ring doorbell, we ring the bell and we see their face, that doesn't count. We have to see the person. And if they say, "Listen, I'm not home, just put it on top of the recycle bin in the garage," we can't do that. That order has to go back and be redelivered at another time. So there's a lot of very stringent regulations. And as a result of that, we're looking at different software vendors that can help with route optimization. Because, for example, if the six of you were customers, we've got to make sure that if everybody is comfortable with having us deliver to you tomorrow, it's, if, it's actually, if you're the closest, and Ms. Flynn, you're next, if you're not, if the timing isn't right, right, we may not be able to deliver to you in that sequence, which can drive up some of the costs. So we're spending some time right now to get the right sort of route optimization software that will allow us to keep prices low, be competitive, and that's one of the reasons why we're looking at probably around a 45-minute drive time.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Sorry, is anybody else, if you do, clear.
Go ahead, I can wait.
No, I just was wondering how many square feet the facility's going to be.
Facility's about 1,800 feet. We don't believe we need a big facility. I mean, what we really need, actually, one of the things we like about the building is it's very nondescript. I think people could easily miss it. We don't want to be known that we're there. You go to a lot of larger marijuana facilities around the state, non-retail, that have taken over older manufacturing facilities. I can think one out, and I think it's, it's North Brookfield. When you actually find the facility, they still have the old manufacturing company sign-ups. It's hard to find them. We want to fall into that class. We're not like the botanist where they want people to know where they are. We want to just blend into the environment and really not be seen because we can't, we can't deal with walk-in business. If somebody missed, if we got to their house at the appointed time, they weren't there, they can't say, "Hey, I'll just run down after work and pick it up," because I work close by to you. There's no walk-in business allowed.
Mrs. Flynn?
I apologize if you, and this is your first joint venture together, the two of you.
Yes.
Do either one of you currently run a similar business?
I am not, I'm working with some other teams that are seeking a license, but I am not in a situation where I'm a license holder.
Okay.
In any manner yet.
Thanks.
I need some, I just needed some advice.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So if there are not any, so just to direct the board's attention as well, the memo to us from Mr. Mizikar regarding potential next steps, but he presented information relating to a meeting that was held together with the assistant town manager, Mrs. Los, Mr. Cahill, town planner, Chief Anderson, Seth Colby, the fire department, our emergency management director, Patty Sheehan, inspector of buildings, Karen Clark, director of public health, and Mr. Mizikar met with Many Rivers. Met with the gentleman here to review a presentation in regards to the recreational marijuana delivery operator host community agreement. And there are six subject matters that were covered during this, many of which were covered here. I think, actually, looking at it quickly, all covered here. And then the conclusion was, after meeting with Many Rivers, the department heads and representatives at the meeting agreed the applicant abides by the town of Shrewsbury's guidance for recreational marijuana establishment. So that's one of the other data point. So what's the pleasure of the board? Options would be to authorize the town manager to negotiate a host community agreement. The other option would be not to. And just one thing to state the obvious, but for those watching at home, is that this board, before I was on it, but watching it, that it comes down to if we don't move forward with it, because folks had asked about it and the societal cost, that it's just as easy for an applicant to go to an adjacent community right down the road in Grafton or Worcester and set up shop there. So it's, it's an opportunity for Shrewsbury, as you talked about, location, location, location. There are financials in here about possible revenues that could come to the town, given the 3% and 3%. So that's what's in front of us. It's just, it's pretty binary in terms of either we don't authorize the town manager to proceed, or we would authorize Mr. Mizikar to proceed with negotiating. What's, where are we with that? Any thoughts?
I would be, I don't know if, I don't know if we can do this. I'd be willing to have the manager stop negotiations, but I got to process some things in my head that came in tonight that I need to, I would like to talk to the manager about. So, I mean, negotiating, I, I think I can ask him the questions and hopefully be satisfied with the answers. But I don't want to go beyond that right now, tonight.
Sure. So we could, Mr. Mizikar, could we take a resolution, authorize you to negotiate, and then it's going to come back?
Yeah, it would come back to the board for your ratification. We would begin with a host community agreement document that the town has used with the two other retailers. It would be thoroughly vetted by the applicant. We would negotiate them, and it would be reviewed by town council to ensure that, since it's been a few years, and this is a new type of license, that it's in an appropriate state for the board to consider entering into it. But absolutely, it's the board's decision.
Yeah, and there'd be other opportunities to Mr. DePaulo's point, ask questions as it comes up, because this is the first venture of this type that we have seen. So to address your point that if we authorize Mr. Mizikar to proceed with negotiations, there'll be ample opportunity to vet any additional questions that you have. Anybody else? Mrs. Cassavan?
Yeah, is there any sort of data on how a delivery service impacts a brick-and-mortar retailer when they're located in the same community?
Well, I don't know there isn't, because there are no delivery operators that are actually up and running. There are two couriers that are, that are functioning right now. So what we would expect is, from stepping away from what we're talking about right now, but just in general, I would expect that the botanist is going to negotiate with a courier service so that they will be in the, have the ability to deliver, home-deliver to their customers. Because there's no home delivery operators operating, there's no data on that. I think we put into our, the book we submitted, there was some US Census information that in Q2 2020, so that was from last year, I believe it was 16.1% of all retail sales went e-commerce. That's actually since gone backward now, it's down to about 14%, but it's growing quickly. And when you think about marijuana, people don't, who are buying from the legacy market, you don't go to your, you're down at the pizza shop to meet the guy like maybe you did 30 or 40 years ago. It's all done electronically. It's either done on Craigslist, Facebook, or Instagram. The order is placed. It's home-delivered, because those people are used to having home-delivery, and they pay through Venmo or Apple Pay or something along those lines. I've gotten a really interesting glimpse as to what that business is about, because some of the folks in the current social equity program are in that business, and I'm helping in them get to the point of trying to get a legal business. So I think that there is going to be ample, there's going to be ample demand. I believe that the home delivery operators, like what Rob wants to do and I'm working on with him, are going to have one challenge, which is they don't have a storefront, and they don't have signs out. So they have to find a way to create a customer base. I don't think it's going to be as easy as most of the SEs, the social equity applicants, actually believe it will be. It's not the field of dreams of build it and they will come. If you look at the current retail numbers throughout the state, and, and I haven't tracked, I tracked it very closely, I haven't updated it since May, but if you look at what the, statewide revenue is growing quickly, but the number of retailers are growing even faster. So if you add up the number of retail days and take each store that's open and count it as a retail day, and then look at the revenue that's out there, the average retail per store is going down very, very quickly. And I wouldn't be surprised that by the end of this year, the average is under $10 million. And I wouldn't be surprised by the end of next year, if it's closer to 6. We're probably going to have about 350 stores, maybe a little bit more than that, by the time all the licenses are granted. And I, we put in there, I guess there's probably going to be around 35 delivery operators, and I can't back that up with any data. It's just my gut feeling. There's a lot of folks in the queue because there's a pre-qualification, you can get pre-qualified for the license, and it's only available to SEs and economic empowerment applicants, but they still have to get through all the steps, and it's still challenging. So that's kind of a long-winded way to talk all around what you asked, but I can't give you any really hard data. Hopefully, that gives you some information that...
Thank you.
Sure.
And I'm comfortable authorizing the manager to continue talking. And I'm, I'm comfortable authorizing the manager to continue talking with them. As you said, if it's not located in Shrewsbury, it's going to locate someplace else. And I would much prefer that, you know, deliveries made in Shrewsbury were generating tax, and surrounding communities, were generating tax dollars for our community. I think it's an opportunity for us. Certainly not ready to, you know, wholeheartedly commit, but definitely want to continue the exploration.
Sure.
Could I just offer a comment? So the way the, the home-delivery works is you can only deliver to communities that allow it. If you house a retail, a recreational retail store, you automatically allow it. If you house a delivery operator, you automatically allow it. Now, Holliston's an interesting community. You can do anything marijuana-related in Holliston except for retail. They're just up in arms about it. You can have a manufacturing or cultivation, but that means that you can't home-deliver to Holliston. So that's another issue that's going to impact some of this are the pockets of communities that haven't yet opted in. I believe within the next year or so, there's going to be some litigation from, from a few attorneys who are going to challenge their towns as to whether a town can ban home-delivery or not. But I'm not banking on any of that. Hence, if you didn't have a home-delivery operator, you pointed out a factor that everybody should consider, which is home-delivery operators around the state can deliver to Shrewsbury because Shrewsbury allows retail.
Correct.
So it's not a case of if you say, well, we don't want home-delivery here, so we won't host any of the operators. It's going to happen no matter what. It's just the way the, the system's structured.
But you don't get any tax revenue.
Correct.
If they aren't located here.
Right. And the other thing, I think, the, while I think we could get to the negotiated host community agreement quickly, we're working from the original document. So since your original host community agreements, the DPH program, which is the medical program, has merged into the Cannabis Control Commission. Hence, there's a lot of changes. We're not going to be, ours is recreational only, adult use. So the current document talks about medical and rec. And it talks about the Department of Public Health, when it's now under the control of the Cannabis Control Commission. So we're going to have just ministerial-type duties to try to get that document in line with the current regulations. I don't think it, we're not going to be back to you in three days, Mr. Clerk, to say, hey, we figured it out, and now we'd like to talk to you about getting approved. I think it's going to take a little time working through the document.
Can I just?
Mr. DePaulo?
With, with, well, two comments. The reason that we can even entertain this and not have to go back to town meeting is because this is not covered under the same, at least part of the law. That it's different. So because we, let me get this right. Because we allowed retail, we can allow a delivery dispensary or delivery service without having to go back because it's not really counted the same way.
Doesn't, it does not count against the retail license limitations set in zoning.
Right. And just one other comment. It has nothing to do with these gentlemen. But the host, host community agreement that in the beginning, all of us who, you know, agreed to, agreed, voted to allow the retail establishments, is so restrictive right now that that part of the 3%, we're going to get it, and we haven't been able to figure out how to use it. So when we talk about three and three, there's three we can use that drops to the general fund, right? That's the tax from the state, right? But the other three has to be related to the impacts of marijuana. And there were communities that have actually canceled their host community agreements because they can't use the money. That might change, but I just think we all need to be aware. And it's not, it has nothing to do with this, but that whole thing of when, you know, this first came out, you get the host community agreement, you get the sex for money, da-da-da-da-da. It, all that good is, is not gold. So, you know, I, I just, I just want to caution on that. We're not, we're getting 6%. We're going to have trouble spending three of it. Unless something changed in the past couple of weeks, Mr. Mizikar.
Well, I mean, just the revenue that we receive from our other host community agreements for the impact fee is used for addiction prevention education in the public schools. So there is an upward bounds, you know, to that. But, you know, that's how we're using the current.
Right. But we have to be, well, hopefully, we don't have to spend $500,000 a year in schools. But is this the same restriction?
Yes.
Okay. So, anyway.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion soon.
I can make a motion. I'm just not sure what I'm making it on.
Well, I think, so let me put something out there. And then it's, what I think we're doing is we're looking for a motion to authorize Mr. Mizikar, or Town Manager, to negotiate the host community agreement with Manny Rivers LLC, subject to final approval of the board. Something to that effect.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero with one refusal. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and consideration.
Next item on the agenda is a time-scheduled appointment meeting with Bernard Cahill, Town Planner, and Cynthia Stewart, Senior Vice President and Managing Director of Public Policy and Community Development at Goman New York Advisory Services regarding the Local Rapid Recovery Grant Program. Welcome, and thank you for your patience. And if you could just introduce yourself, even though I just introduced you, but if you could.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board, for having us here this evening. My name is Bernard Cahill. I am the Town Planner. You can call me Bernie, that's fine. I'm going to give a brief, a very brief, one-paragraph overview of what we're about to talk about this evening, and then hand it off to our two guests. So in December of 2020, the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative announced funding for economic revitalization planning under what's called the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Program, or LRRP. The goal of the program was to give every municipality in Massachusetts the opportunity to develop local rapid recovery plans tailored to the unique economic challenges and immediate COVID-19 impacts that have affected downtowns, town centers, and commercial areas throughout the state. The planning department applied for and received approval to participate in the LRRP program. Say that 10 times fast, and it gets harder every time. In March of 2021, Goman New York was selected to provide consulting services to Shrewsbury as part of the LRRP program with Cynthia Stewart as a designated planning, plan facilitator. Cindy brings over 30 years of experience in community engagement and retail, real estate advocacy as a senior community development and public policy executive. With us this evening is also a special guest, Michael Goman, a principal of Goman New York. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Cynthia and also to Michael Goman to introduce themselves a little bit more and the program.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bernie.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm going to have Mike just tell you a little bit about the firm so you can get a sense of our background.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. We're glad to be here. As Town Planner Cahill said, my name is Mike Goman. I'm a principal at Goman New York. We're a planning and economic development firm based out of East Hartford, Connecticut, where we're several dozen people sort of working in this, in this arena. We are an advisor to entities that own a lot of real estate but aren't real estate people. That's the best way I can describe it. And essentially, our job is to provide support on economic development and planning issues to, to the towns through people like your Town Planner or economic development staff. Our clients beyond towns, though, span a lot of institutional clients. So, for example, and we serve a number of state and quasi-state agencies, quite a few regional government groups, including, for example, the Connecticut, pardon me, the Capital Region Development Authority. We also work for the Connecticut Department of Transportation in the Rail Division. Big owners of real estate, all kinds of platforms and train stations and cell towers and billboards, but they're train people, they're not real estate people. So we, we help them with real estate decisions. We also work a lot with healthcare systems, large hospital systems, again, big owners of real estate. And lastly, with colleges and universities. In the municipal space, which is where we are tonight, we currently serve, I guess, several dozen municipalities. I think under the contract that we're working, that Planner Cahill mentioned, we're a little over 20 communities now in Massachusetts that we're working with. In Connecticut, we are the real estate advisor for the cities of Hartford, New London, Manchester, Bristol, East Hartford. That's the current ones, and Bloomfield, I should mention as well. And have done dozens of assignments. Our focus isn't on design. You'll run into a lot of firms that do what we do that are really focused on design. We're business people, we're very focused on data. We start by looking at communities and assessing current capacity, current demand. And the plans we come up with are very specifically designed to address the demand that exists in a given trade area or community. And that's an important component. Our view is that if we can get, if we can use data to get to a market-based, data-driven solution, then designing is kind of the easy part. We believe that, you know, with the right people on the team, we can make anything look nice and get it to work. The critical piece is it's got to hit the buttons on the demand side or it's just not going to be successful. And what makes financial sense in that way is the, are the projects that get built. So that's our, that's our mantra. If it makes financial sense, it's going to work and it's going to get built. And the way you determine whether it makes financial sense is by doing this deep dive into the data. So we use data and qualitative information and analyzing all that essentially to kind of de-risk the development process. And that's what we do. So Cindy's here tonight. She's the lead, as Planner Cahill mentioned, on the work that we've been doing with Shrewsbury, and I'll turn it over to Cindy.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
So I'm going to take just a few minutes and kind of go through the first slides fairly quickly with the intention of just really setting the framework of how we got to where we are today. At the end of this process, you are going to get a full report where all of this data and analysis will be included. But what the state asked for was for us to develop these projects based upon the data that we collected, right? So there was a demographic analysis done. There was a survey of businesses as well as onsite analysis, all with being able to inform and help guide the decisions that we make. As Bernie indicated, they set this up to be a six-month process because it, we were kind of building the plan as we were flying it. I think it's going to morph into more like a seventh, maybe eight-month process. And as I said, we started with the Phase One. We are just finishing up Phase Two, which is the development of the project recommendations. And that puts us into Phase Three right now, where we're going to discuss what's proposed for the projects. There may need to be some tweaking done with that. And then the plan will be submitted to the Commonwealth and then, in turn, sent back to you. As we develop these projects, we were asked to really focus on improving the public realm, improving the private realm, coming up with some strategies to drive revenue and sales, address administrative capacity. There's no reason to make a recommendation if there's no way to see it through to fruition and completion. Think about improving tenant mix. And then, in the same vein, really important to the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative is addressing cultural and arts organization and cultural and arts needs. And just to refresh your memory, this is the project area that we looked at. So this is the primary area where the data was collected, where the inventory and assessment was done. Just quickly, as we looked at that, we found 65 street-level businesses. At that time, in April, May, there were eight vacancies. I think there may still be seven. You know, we were just up there driving around before we came here this evening, and a lot of the same spots are still vacant. I know one space for sure got filled. Just so you know, we followed the guidelines of the state, so it did not include government nonprofit. It did not include any second-story businesses or account of your housing. I think of note here, though, is this, it's a small slide, but that big orange right there is the bulk of what is located in your town center, which is office, and it's primarily medical office, you know? So when you think about traditional retail, the numbers are smaller there. So it's just something to keep in mind as you're thinking about how to grow and expand the base and what we might need to focus on, you know, moving forward, whether that's to continue and grow the food and beverage, which you have a good toehold in right now. So we did survey the businesses, and you'll get a full report on their responses to a myriad of questions. But the, the big thing here is that 88% of them did report being impacted by COVID, which I am sure is, you know, no surprise to you. 50% had a decline in revenue, and the figures go on. And you will get a full report on how all of that, you know, affected the businesses in the district. So we heard about the decline in business revenue, and we've got the data on that, you know, percentage-wise, how they all reported. We also have the indication that 64 of the businesses had less onsite traffic, you know, in the January, February 2021 than they did pre-COVID. So that's over the course of the whole period. So it kind of gives you an idea of what they were dealing with there. And then one of the important things we asked them was what's important to them? What would they like to see, right? And so we surveyed, I've got the topics here that they said rated over 80%, you know, as it came to renovating storefronts, changing the parking, cultural events, outdoor dining, streetscape and sidewalk improvements, public spaces, place-making, marketing strategies. And I included this even though it wasn't in the 80th percentile, but a recruitment program, right? To attract additional businesses to the district. You know, being a little more proactive instead of waiting on them to just show up, really thinking about your retail mix and getting actively engaged in retail recruitment. So a part of our onsite assessment was to come and to look at the sidewalks and streets, the wayfinding, the public lighting, the road beds and crosswalks. And those were all given a grade. And that will be in the final report. I, I could really get into detail with you on that. But just so that, you know, we looked at all of these different elements. You know, before we came up with these projects, the awnings and facades, the signage, the storefront lighting, were all things that were assessed for all the businesses that were in that district. So once we did that, we, you had a great group of people. It was great to work with the Town Center Association and the Advisory Committee you put together. We discussed those findings in much more depth. You know, had two different meetings to do that, and then to come up with some ideas about these project recommendations that fit into these categories. And so we have the public realm. You know, when you think about the crosswalks, the streets, the private realm, how you might incorporate art and other improvements to the private realm, things to drive revenue and sales, and address administrative capacity, improve the tenant mix, and then think about cultural and arts needs. So what I've come up with, based upon all that input, and what I really want to focus on now are the projects, the preliminary projects that we think we're going to include in this report and get feedback. Whether we get it tonight, or you have time to digest this, and maybe you email Bernie, or feel free to email me and give me your thoughts about, yes, you're headed in the right direction, but think about X, Y, or Z. So that's kind of where we are in this vein of the process. And I think really, as you've got a great organization with the Town Center Association, there's so much more they could do if they had some administrative support. So my thought process is to think about a part-time position. Maybe it's a two-year pilot program to provide marketing support, website, social media, community outreach, when we think about their partners and sponsors, new member recruitment. Get them more actively engaged in coordinating and managing special events with the idea, over the course of these two years, that you would think about, is there potential there for actually a formal business improvement district, right? And if that was created, then they would fund themselves going forward through a special assessment. So that's, I think, in order to complete some of the other projects that I'm proposing, this is crucial. And it could be someone that's actually employed by the town who provides support to the Town Center Association. And so that will be in the report. Potential partners and way to, to fund that will also be in the report. So that's Project One. Project Two looks at parking management. And specifically, I'm thinking about the People's Bank parking lot and finding a way to do some shared parking there, whether it's specified hours of the day. And there's already work going on up there on Main Street, you know, to take. And there's already work going on up there on Main Street, you know, to take away that, what was being used as parking, which wasn't really parking on the street. So to think about, you know, some curbside pickup spaces maybe being designated in that People's Bank lot. So I, I really think that's something that needs to be looked at. And then think about public parking signs, because there really aren't any in, in the district at all. Although there is some parking available, it's not clearly designated. So just thinking about parking and parking management, I think, is important. And then when you think about the common, what a great asset you have there. I think, my opinion is that it's an underutilized asset, that it could really find ways to let the community interact with that space more. And so one of the things that I'm proposing is actually the development of a memorandum of, of understanding between the historical society, the church, and the town of Shrewsbury, so that people know clearly who's the one person they need to go and talk to about being able to activate or use the common, who's actually responsible for coordinating those events, maintenance, activation of the space would all be included in that. Because the information I'm hearing is it's not always clear, and people have to go from one to the other, to the other, to get approval for an event, and it can be a little wieldy and difficult. And so I think that might affect sometimes how often the space actually gets used for public events. So that is one of the projects that I'm also proposing. And then if we are able to get some assistance for the Town Center Association, then to really develop a program focused on marketing the district, the town center, expand and improve the website, develop a whole social media marketing strategy for the town center, have them coordinate year-round events, and then actually work with the business owners and provide them technical assistance on improving their own websites and their social media, window activations, you know, so that those windows are more attractive, which in turn, you know, helps with pedestrian ta, traffic and things like that. So I really think, as we think about the businesses and really trying to drive traffic to the town center, that this will be one of the crucial projects that we can implement. And you've got this wayfinding study with some great recommendations, and Bernie and I have talked about it, and I think plans are already underway to start implementation of that. And I would just want to reinforce how important I think that is with a focus on public parking first, and then finding a way to do signs that also promote the businesses, you know, not just wayfinding signs, but also signs that promote businesses that may be on the Main Street or Maple, but might be on the side streets as well. So wayfinding, parking signage, I think, are all crucial to the district. And then, as we look at the People's Bank parking lot, this could be part of a memorandum of understanding on the usage, usage of those parking spaces. When you look at where that sign is, right in the middle of the parking, what I would propose is that we take two spaces and activate that into a little pocket park right there in the People's Bank lot. The sidewalk will be a little wider in that area, so you could, it could all kind of merge together. So that's one of the projects that I'm proposing, because you need places for people to walk and to sit and walk and sit as they move up and down through the district. So that's one area of improvement. We heard from the business owners about the need for a facade improvement program, and you can see the facades run the gamut in the district. And you've already got some guy, design guidelines for people to use. And so what I would recommend is the actual development of a facade improvement program where you also create a design workbook, so they can see, you know, be inspired by this design workbook on things that they can do with their facades, and then stimulate the private investment through matching grants or reimbursement programs. And there's other ways, you know, to incentivize businesses, you know, to be engaged in the facade improvement program. It could be low or no permitting fees, you know, for those improvements, tax abatements or tax agreements where they, they're not, their taxes don't go up for a certain period of time if they made these improvements. So we will address some of those in the actual report, but really finding ways to encourage the owners, you know, to really enhance the appearance of the buildings in compliance with what the design guidelines that you have set for the town. I know there's, we're waiting on the state to do some improvements to the roadway up there, but the crosswalks are in need of some assistance. You've got the one pedestrian-activated crosswalk on Maple, which I think is great. It's down by the post office. The traffic is heavy up there on Main Street. And you've got that library where you think about children, parents with children wanting to walk across the street and get to Main Street. So I think it might not be easy to do, but having this conversation with the state about some additional pedestrian-activated crosswalks, definitely thinking about how those crosswalks are improved and highlighted, you know, to really make them stand out to people. And even to consider some rumble strips, right? Especially on Main Street there, that main intersection, to slow the traffic down as they're approaching that intersection. Because people want to feel safe if they're walking up there. So I think those are all things that need to be considered. Another project we think has the merit, I mean, you have this, you had a, the light the common, I mean, look at the crowd that was there, you know, it was a great thing. So think about, at a minimum, some quarterly events, you know, that are on the calendar, people anticipate them. These are just some suggestions. It's something that you would put together, a group of citizens, people from the Town Center Association, to come up with what fits for all of you, but, you know, maybe in the spring, do come grow with us. I know you already have a plant sale. Maybe that should be moved up to the common and incorporated as a, a much bigger event. You have the story walk, the library already does, at one of your local parks. And Mary Beth and I have been in conversations with the library, and I believe they're going to try to do a Town Center story walk in September, which will be a real beta test of whether we can get parents to go up there with their children and do it. But that could be a summertime event where the story changes periodically in the summer, or concerts on the common, fall in love with Shrewsbury, some kind of fall festival, and then hopefully, maybe this year, you know, light the common again and have that festival. But just so, there's things that drive traffic and people back to the town center on a regular basis. And then when we think about the common, maybe it's time to maybe think about investing some additional funds on the common. And, and I'm thinking about placemaking and trying to get people into the common on a regular basis. You've got the library right across the street, some, you know, like, these are musical instruments in a park, you know, something that would draw the children's interest over there to the common. I don't know how big chess is here, but, you know, it's getting a resurgence across the country. We know, I've seen the children, you know, they leave the school and they're riding their bikes down Main Street, pell mell in the middle of all the traffic, trying to get over to the Dunkin' Donuts. But if there was a way to drive them maybe to the common, you know, I don't know. But I, I think there's room for some improvement there, you know, just to encourage people to come and activate the space. So that will be a project. And then as we think about public art, it's really a way to connect the community to a place. It's a way to generate traffic without a large-scale event, because people want to come and maybe see what the art installation might be. A lot of communities, you know, are doing murals. You've got a couple of great buildings up there that are ripe for murals to be painted on them, if that's something the community could get behind. Electrical boxes. Now, these two examples are a little different. You see a lot of communities where they've painted these boxes and they get artists to come in and paint them. These two examples, one from Newton and one from Knoxville, Tennessee, those are actually wraps, where they've come up with the art design and they could tell stories about the history of Shrewsbury. They could promote individuals who have done great things. I mean, the, the opportunities are endless about ways to implement the wraps. And part of the final report will also include some case studies or examples for you of other communities who have done this type of work to give some guidance if you think you want to go that way. And then I just threw the bear walk in here. This is something that Hendersonville, North Carolina does every year to raise money for, for the American Cancer Society. And you can see, there's like three or four bears. They have them all up and down Main Street. Local artists paint them, then they're auctioned off at the end of the summer, and it's a big fundraiser that they've done for seven years up there. So there might be something like that that could really generate interest. And what happens is people want to see, you know, so they come, they walk along the Main Street, they take their pictures with the bears. So it, it is really a way to generate traffic. It might be a way to engage local artists and really enhance the sense of community positive, you know, impactful way to have some impact. This one is a little, so we look at Empire Cleaners. It's a blighted property. It's a high-risk property. We've engaged with an environmental subject matter expert to give us some guidance about if the town were to proceed, could it be turned into a parking lot that could be paved over and then in some ways activated, you know, maybe with food trucks or other things? And then when you have events, there's extra parking available. It probably won't be cheap, and it may be high risk, but it's worth considering versus what you have there now. So that is one of the projects that we're thinking about including in the report. And then another one that we really took a close look at, this picture is very small, but I know you're all familiar with Chase Terrace and how it comes out there to Main Street, and it's really a blind intersection. Even if you're making a right turn, it's pretty, it's a blind spot. And you're at a moment in time right now with the redevelopment that's getting ready to happen with the Beale School, that you're in a position to perhaps negotiate with them and figure out a way to close off the entrance on Main Street and redirect that street right across the corner of the Beale Street property and have it come out at the light? And if you would be successful in doing that, then that area of Chase Terrace that is right there at Main Street could be converted to another pocket park and provide this additional, you know, green space there along Main Street. So this would not be an easy project to do either. It would require some real negotiation with the State Highway Department, with the developers of the Beale Street property. But it's a moment in time that you won't have again, when you have, you know, this opportunity to have some say over how that property is utilized. So we came up with 13 projects. I probably could have come up with 20 if I just kept going and going and going. But we wanted to come up with the, you know, 10 to 13 to 14 projects that we think could have the greatest impact. And so I'm happy to answer questions. You all have a copy of my contact information if you think of questions or comments that you want to send to me. The report is being generated, and it, they've changed our deadline. We have until like October the 5th to submit that to the state. I want to get it done by the end of September. So really, I would like to hear any additional comments or thoughts from you within the next two weeks, really, so that I can really apply those to the work that I'm doing on the final report. And with that, you know, I'm happy to take questions.
Sure, thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
We're all waiting for each other to talk.
Yeah, so I'll.
It's a lot of information.
No, I'll jump in. So before we begin, I also want to recognize, thank you for your presentation, very helpful, a lot of, I mean, the, the Town Center, we've talked a lot about, and there are a lot of great possibilities with it. Before I ask a question, I also want to recognize the Shrewsbury Town Center Association, many members are here as well, and they'll play a very pivotal role, whatever this report looks like, whatever the recommendations look like. But they're going to play a very important role as we develop the Town Center. The only question I have related to that is, has the, I, I was participating in two meetings and appreciate it. I mean, you know your stuff, and you gave us a lot of things to think about, and sometimes it was crooked because you were a couple steps ahead of us.
Sorry.
No, 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 in a good way. This is an area that's your expertise, and that's what you helped us really think outside the box. This is an area that a lot of us aren't familiar with. Has the Town Center Association had, Association had a chance to opine on this at all, or?
On the projects themselves?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Okay. Maybe that's.
And if, Mary Beth, if you want me to do a presentation for them via Zoom, I can do that. Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Just to get their feedback, because this gives us a lot to think about, but that's going to be part of it as we move forward to implement it.
Right.
It's this partnership between the town and the real business leaders of our community.
I had a really great meeting with them in July where I got their input.
Yep.
And of course, I went over these projects with Mary Beth, but not with the whole Town Center Association. So I'd be happy to do that.
That's great stuff. No, it's great. Thank you. Any other questions? So we'll need to get comments in the next couple of weeks. Mr. DePaolo?
I was just going to say, thank you for the presentation. There are a lot of good ideas in here, spurred even more in my mind from what you said. I think there's some things in here that we probably can do. There's some things that actually, coincidentally, are already being talked about, unrelated to this.
Okay.
Because of other things that are going on. But it's good to see that the, a couple of the things that we're talking about dovetail, and are almost the same as what you're saying here. So I, I think that might mean that we're on the right track, but give me a couple of days, I'll send you some emails.
Okay, all right.
I need to think about it a little bit.
Sure.
But I, I, I think it's great. I think there's some great ideas in here. I think one of the things that we have to be able to do, though, is, and I know that, I, I think the Town Center Association is a great organization, there's a lot of vitality, and there's a lot of excitement, and there's a lot of work that's probably more important. So I think they, they could, they could help in the process of being able to educate the property owners and the businesses of the benefits of doing this, if, if there's some help for them to be able to do it. Because one thing to say, yes, it'd be great, I'd love to, in front of my building, and as you said, it probably will take low-interest loans or grants or something to do it. But I think if it's presented the right way and the package is put together the right way, and it's, it's really the details are thought out, I, I think there's good, there might be good opportunities for the businesses to be accepting of this, because they'll see that it'll help.
Right.
So I, I like, I like a lot of the ideas. I think it's great, and I can see some of them. As you said it, I know you took some pictures, but I'm envisioning it. I think it can happen, so I think you did a really good job. Thank you.
Mrs. Kesselman.
Thank you again for the presentation, and to the members of the STCA that are here with us this evening and that have been working so diligently for the past few years to try to really revitalize the downtown. Every time we talk about the center of town, it's, it's inspiring, right? Because you, you really see the possibility of what could be. Sometimes I think, I know for myself, it's really hard for me to look at what is and try to imagine what could be. It's just overwhelming. But it's really great when someone takes the ideas and puts them in front of you and gives you a, a drawing to sort of help you get there.
Right.
And I think that this does that exactly. That's what we want for our town center. We want it to be a place that draws people, that encourages people to linger a bit longer, to take advantage of businesses, to be able to sit in a park. All of those aspects are captured here. There's a lot of potential and a lot that we can do. I guess my question, and maybe Mr. Samia, you can help answer this. So I know that we had a, an amount, a grant amount. Was that amount to pay for this report? And then where would further funding come from if we wanted to implement some of these ideas?
That's the.
So part of what the state is doing is helping all the plan facilitators identify potential sources of funds. We have our first webinar on Thursday. We have our first webinar on Thursday to talk about that. And then there'll be a second one in another week or so. So they've been scouring the sources and looking at what might be some acceptable uses of some of the American Rescue Plan funds for this kind of work, what other grants, what other foundations, what other state money might be available. And so the first webinar is on Thursday, which I'll be participating in. There'll be a second one. And so when you get the report, part of that will be some suggestions on where potential funding might be available to you. Some of it might be competitive.
Of course.
You know, but... So that will be included in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, Ms. Gray Report.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you in person.
Yeah, we've connected over Zoom a couple times.
Yeah, it's good to see people in person every time I'll say that. So thank you. Next item is under new business. It's to review an act to rescind the designation of the members in positions of the following as special municipal employees pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 268A. Colleagues, as you recall, at our last meeting, we have a member of the Police Department who is in transition to become a full-time firefighter. Part of that process was to be a call firefighter, and that was part of the designation. We've since received advice that under Chapter 268A, under Section 1N, a municipal position or office is eligible as special, but there are restrictions on that. If the office is unpaid or it's part-time, or there's an hours restriction, none of those apply. So the action that we took last meeting would, under Item 10, would need to take action to rescind. And I'll just explain 11. But the Section 20 of Chapter 268A does allow, as long as specific criteria are met, which are presented in the correspondence that we have, but it relates, including about the contracting agency, in this case, the Fire Department. There are finding also by the head of the contracting agency, which would be Chief Bona, makes and files with the clerk of the city or town a written certification that no employee of that agency is available to perform those services as a part of their regular duties. In this case, that is something that's included in the materials as well, the certification from Chief Bona, and that is Item 11.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't want to, the evening's starting to get a little late, but I am... What is this all about?
Trying to figure out exactly what this is about. Sure. Simply put, a police officer, a full-time position, cannot be designated as special.
Cannot be a special town employee?
Correct.
What was the special? I'm having trouble making the connection. Is this because he was moving from one, from police to fire? And it was like an interim step until he made the full? Is that what it was?
Yeah, that's correct. He's a full-time police officer that would like to become an on-call firefighter.
Oh, an on-call firefighter.
Yeah, eventually, which is part of our pipeline to full-time positions within our department. So, yes.
So this, what we're doing tonight, is going to allow that to happen?
It's two steps. We're effectively undoing what we did last time.
Okay.
And then the second part is, under the Conflict of Interest statute, what's allowable under Section 20 that these criteria met, including the certification from the chief? So it's two steps. I explained them together just because we're undoing and then allowing or putting forth.
I understood that part of it.
Okay.
I just was like, what are we actually doing here? I thought I, I think I understood it, but I just wanted to be sure I knew what I was talking about.
It's like housekeeping, then?
It's effectively housekeeping.
We did something, and now we need to undo it and do it the right way?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yes.
You're not a lawyer.
I was thinking more of like the original, I was a little bit, I thought I knew what it was, and now that we were changing it, I was...
Yeah, we got it wrong. We didn't get it right last time. So I'm doing it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
I move the board to rescind, rescind the designation of special municipal employees pursuant to MGL 268A for the position of police officer.
Oh, second, sorry. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion for Item 11?
I move the board approve the, I'm not sure what the question, we approve the disclosure filed by, excuse me, filed by Anthony Gabriel and approved, further approved by the fire Does that work, Mr. Mizikar?
Yeah, and the board will, I believe the chairman signs off on behalf of the board.
With the board signing, with the chair signing on behalf of the board.
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for making those motions, Mr. LeBeau. Next item, under Item 12, is to review an act, review an act to grant CMRK Inc. a 90-day grace period to bring donation bins located at 277 Boston Turnpike into compliance pursuant to Article 25 of the general bylaws. Article 25 of the general bylaws, by way of background, relates to donation collection bins for not-for-profit and profit organizations and individuals. The provision of that bylaw, which I believe was adopted in 2020, Mr. DePaolo, wasn't this past year, 19 or 20?
2020.
Right.
Yep. Is relevant section here that we'll be discussing shortly is under D. Donation collection bins are permitted in any district except all residential zoning districts. Bins are not allowed on vacant lots or lots with buildings which do not have a valid town issued certificate of occupancy. So as we know, there have been on this property historically, it, there was not a certificate of occupancy. I'm trying to remember what gas station it was. Was it Sunoco many years ago? Many years ago before it was boarded up. So there's been correspondence back and forth between the town, as well as the owner of the property, relating to the bylaw and compliance. The latest correspondence from the property owner, and then I'll ask you to introduce yourselves as for...
Mr. Chairman, could I just, point of order? The way this reads, this is not a meeting. This is for us to discuss. I mean, if you want to open it up, the rest of the board wants to know if this wasn't a meeting with...
Ah, okay.
They can do it if you want, but this is really for us to decide what we want it to do.
Well, that's fine. I guess if they have any questions, so fair enough. You're right.
You can, well, if there are any questions...
You won't get the chair, I guess, so I'm sorry. No, I don't, if we have all the information, then that's fine, although I may have a question from Mr. Masiallo. But the, so to bring this home, it's, the property owners asked for 90-day grace period to get the property in compliance via the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And the question in front of the board is simply, do we want to grant that? So that, you're right, it's a discussion. It's not a hearing. It's not a meeting. But it is, if there are any questions, they're here. How about we do that? But if, and I guess the one question I have, and maybe I'll go to Mr. Mizikar, is the status of the certificates of occupancy, where are we with that in terms of developing the site?
I believe a building permit has been requested or applied for. I don't know if it's been granted yet or not. Mr. Masiallo would certainly know that.
Yes, the, John Masiallo from Masiallo Construction, I'm also a Shrewsbury resident, we have been granted a building permit.
Okay. And then just one other question. So 90 days, is that something we'd expect to have a certificate of occupancy within a 90-day period?
Yes.
It's the only questions I have. What's, any other questions? Or what's the pleasure of the committee, board? Excuse me.
I have a few comments.
Go ahead, Mr. DePaolo.
I recently became aware that Mr. Masiallo is involved.
Okay.
And that gave me some comfort that we can believe that the work will be done, and it'll be done in a timely manner. I do, I think generally, I would, I would, I'm willing to say, okay. But we've been dancing around this situation for years about keeping this place cleaned up. And I know that they've tried, and it's not all their fault. I understand that. But even when they were, the owner was notified, we really didn't get reactions other than a lawyer asking a question and asking for information. So we've danced around this for another several months. So I guess, one of my concerns is, this is being built out, and we saw the floor plan. I got a copy of it. We got a copy from the, from the building inspector. You know, having a building that's got an occupancy permit and it's not being used on a regular basis, you know, this gets into a gray area with the law, but if it's not being used, it's not being occupied and used as a normal business establishment, somebody in there, you know, is that kind of skirting the intent of the law? Because having an occupancy permit and not having anybody in it are two different things. So I have, I have one concern about that, and maybe we'll have to take that up down the road. And the other, well, not concern I have, is if this thing goes on, and it goes on beyond 90 days, and unless there's some real good reason why it's taking more than 90 days, that they come back to the board and ask for more time because of some specific reason for they can't get materials, whatever, then, but I think that's where I would draw the line in the sand and say, okay, you're going to get notice, and you're going to get, start getting fines until you come into compliance. Because, I mean, this, again, I understand people dropping stuff off there is not, I don't know how you can actually control it. But it's been going on for a while. It's gone on for a long while. And this actually was one of the places that was the genesis of this problem, and I just don't think we should tolerate it going on much longer. So going back to my original statement, I, okay, I'm willing to give them the 90 days, but after that, no. Unless, unless there's a real bona fide reason why it's going to take that long, and we'll see about occupancy. And I don't know if we want to get into that discussion here with the owner, because I'm not sure it's the appropriate place.
Right.
Right now, because we weren't prepared for a meeting. But I think we certainly should ask what the intent of the use of that site is. So you can either do it today or send a letter. I would be more comfortable sending a letter.
That's fine. So you brought up a point, though, that I think is worth talking about. Is the board comfortable with a 90-day grace period? Is that something we'd want to look at a shorter period, given the back and forth?
I apologize for just asking a clarifying question because I'm not familiar with some of the background, but is the intent to have an extension because they plan to have occupancy and therefore would be approved to keep the donation bins there?
Yeah.
That is their intent.
That's, that's the request behind this.
Technically, they're not in compliance right now. They could be fined every day, whether they have the permit or not. What we're saying is, look, fine, we'll give you 90 days, get your act together. So yes, that's what they're asking. They're asking for time to come into compliance.
So for me, I, I would like to grant the 90-day grace period because I see an opportunity to do something with a piece of property that's been sitting sort of just empty and kind of not really great to look at for a while. So if this is an opportunity to maybe make some improvements and possibly have something go into that spot, we've waited this long, I'm willing to wait the 90 additional days to see where it goes. And but then after that, I agree with Mr. DePaolo, we would need to be more firm in our stance.
Mr. LeBeau.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, considering the history of the site, I think this is a very positive, potentially positive development, that I hope will be a positive development. And as we've all spoken, I move the board act to grant CMRK Inc. a 90-day grace period to bring donation bins located at 277 Boston Turnpike into compliance pursuant to Article 25 of the general bylaws.
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next item, next item under Item 13, new business. Review an act and a letter of support to the planning board for Centec Park North Development Project, Northbridge Partners. Colleagues, we have a draft letter we had in the drive for comment today. August 5th, the planning board had a public hearing on this subject matter and continued it to August 19th, so this is still ripe for, to happen. Just wanted to see, several of you had an opportunity to watch the planning board, but wanted to get your thoughts as to the subject or the, what's included in the letter, as well as what you want to authorize. Floor is open. Mr. DePaolo.
Well, I think to keep it on the positive side. I think a full letter to the board expressing our support, which unfortunately, we didn't do formally, except to, which was really a big step, turning the land over to the SDC. That, and the whole part of that process, as you know, was, we weren't going to do that until we saw a project that we agreed would be a good project for that site. So I think we need to write a letter of support. I think a little bit of history, 18 and a half years. This is first, I think it's 18 and a half years, might only be 18, that this is the first bona fide offer with somebody who's willing to take this all the way to permitting and to start construction as soon as possible. This really is a critical piece of, and I think we should include in the letter, and I don't have all the answers, but I'm just telling you what my thoughts are, that this is a critical piece of, well, it's one of the most critical economic development projects in the town in a really, really long time. And that supporting this within, within the confines of the laws and zoning regulations and all of that, that I think essentially, if the board agrees, we think this should move forward. And I think if, if it doesn't, I think it's worth mentioning that this is going to have a chilling effect on further economic development projects in town. And there are a couple that maybe haven't made it to the public realm yet that is still being developed that could be substantial to the town. And I personally have a concern of the message it's going to send if it's not. And again, if it meets all the rules, it meets the zoning, whatever the regs are, the state laws, then I think they should be treated no different than anybody else. And, you know, hopefully, it can be supported. And obviously, we can't tell the planning board what to do, but we certainly can express a strong opinion. So I guess in a nutshell, that's my thoughts. I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks.
Colleagues, anybody else?
So I had the opportunity to watch the planning board meeting. I heard very clearly from some of the residents that might abut the property, that there are concerns regarding traffic. I heard the discussion about, you know, prohibiting a left-hand turn onto South Street, similar to the discussion we had regarding that same situation on Walnut Street. Route 20 is a trucking route. This parcel of land was bought, as Mr. DePaolo said, almost two decades ago. The purpose is redevelopment. We have hung on, we have waited, we have seen projects come before the SDC that weren't the right project. This finally has the potential to be the right project, and I think it's important, as important of an opportunity, I think, as we see with Beal, and we talk quite a bit about the opportunity to redevelop the Town Center, this also is a huge economic opportunity for us. And it's important that this board sends a strongly worded letter of support so that not only Northbridge understands and the planning board understands our position on this, but as you said, Mr. DePaolo, the rest of the world out there that might be looking at Shrewsbury for some other project of similar scope knows that we do welcome these type of projects, and we are open to having those discussions and continue to look at Shrewsbury favorably when trying to locate a business. favorably when trying to locate a business.
If, if I'm.
Go ahead, Mr. DePaolo.
I didn't mean, if I, and I, I hope I didn't sound that I was indifferent to the concerns of the neighbors, but there is a two-hundred-foot, no-cut, no-build buffer zone between the project and the Thomas Farm Circle community. There, we don't have a two-hundred-foot buffer zone and a no, a no-cut, so that's got to stay that way, anywhere else in town. That is a significant buffer zone that was put in when we initially permitted this thing. You know, and we talked about this from the start. So I think we do need to be mindful of the concerns, and I think there were some things that Northbridge did, and I think maybe, I might be wrong, could be, could be considering to do a few things to make it even better, but I think they've been very receptive. I can tell you, and I'm, I'm not going to speak for the gentleman, but I can tell you that the gentleman who lives directly across from the barn, or whatever you call it, on South Street, who's lived there for a long time, told me, because I said, you know, it's almost moving, it's almost at the point where it's ready to go. I think it's going to move forward, that's great for the town, it might not be as great for you. And he said, no. He said, this thing needs to be developed, it's been sitting there long enough. And I said, well, it's across the street from you. He said, I know, but it, it needs to happen. So everybody is not opposed to it in that neighborhood. And I think as long as we can be as sensitive as possible, the planning board can be consider of the neighbors' needs, then I still think we should support it.
So a couple concepts that have been discussed. If it's compliant with state and local regulations, our bylaws, we're mindful of the neighbors with the buffer zone. We have talked for years, whether it's the property itself, since acquiring it, or as a community generally, the need for economic development. I think it would be a big risk for us going forward elsewhere throughout the community if we signal to someone who engages in good faith, part of negotiation, invests in due diligence, and continues to play by the rules, and then gets to a point where it can't proceed, even though it appears to be consistent with, we're behind it, and it seems compliant with everything else, and mindful of that balancing of the equities with concerns that neighbors have too. I think it is important for us to send a letter. I think that if this were not to proceed, I think that the negative effects would far transcend beyond this project itself. We're looking at Beal, we're looking throughout the community, not for commercial endeavors willy-nilly, but we want businesses here. We talk a lot about economic development, possibly additional resources in the Planning Department slash Economic Development Office, and we even had a presentation earlier about, you know, being proactive and reaching out to businesses, and this would completely counter that, that you're going to come in and make some investments and then you can't proceed. I think that would really chill future, even that start, that doing that dance, doing the negotiation, unless there's more substance up front, which we wouldn't be able to do that either. So I agree, I think that we're very respectful of other boards' roles, yet at the same time, we went through a very deliberative process. We didn't just give authority to the SDC, we thought through it, we've seen the letter of intent, we've asked a lot of questions, and that's why we are where we are. And I think, given the importance of it, it's to show our support. I think a letter is worthwhile, to provide history, as you've talked about, and why we support it, and why we think it's important for the community, for all the reasons that have been talked about, from the age to the need for development, to providing additional critical resources for our community, which is what we bought the property for. Mrs. Flynn?
Yes, I will not belabor the point. I agree with my colleagues, and I am in support of sending this letter.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the previous statements.
Great, so if that's it, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board issue a letter of support to the planning board for Centec Park, Park North Development Project, for Northbridge Partners, incorporating the concepts that were discussed at the meeting this evening.
Second. I've been moved and seconded, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. DePaolo.
I know, it's like, I really, I'll just be quick, but my understanding is you're not going to be able to attend that planning board meeting?
Yeah, I will be, I'll have a graduation on the nineteenth, so I might be.
I certainly am, I don't know, Mr. LeBeau, if you're going to be able to make the planning board meeting. But whoever is there, I would hope, whether it's me, or Ms. Flynn, or Ms. Cassavian, or Mr. LeBeau, should, I think whoever, whoever it is should be able to represent that, speaking on behalf of the board, letter or no letter, because I think it's that important. I mean, I certainly can speak, as Mo DePaolo from Moat Ave, that representing, whoever, we all could get up and say we're representing the board. I think it's important, if we're going to put this much effort into it, to be able to do that.
I'm fine with that. I mean, it's fine, it's as simple as presenting additional flavor on the letter that we're going to present, but I think what's important is the letter itself. We can present it and showing a presence and our support for it. I'm fine with that.
Good.
We can figure out who's going to go. No, I don't either. I think, I want free to go, it's just a question of talking about, so, okay. So on to the next item. To review an act on the request for the October twenty, twenty-one special town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles dated August fifth, twenty-twenty-one from Mr. Bernard Cahill, town planner, Mr. Mizikar, is this more information at this point, and as we get the language in there, we take action on it, or what's the next step for this one?
So this is, yeah, this is just information from the planning board. I don't believe the board needs to take action on it this evening, as we will incorporate it into the draft. We have laid out a plan, and will tentatively propose an October, a special town meeting October eighteenth, and we will incorporate this in the original draft for you. And this will certainly be included on it.
Okay, any questions on this at all? Okay, it lays out what we're going to see soon enough, so these four proposed amendments. Okay, great, so now we're covered all the formal parts, now we're in correspondence. Next item is, letter dated July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one from David Lee, PO Box one eighty-two North, Mass. zero one five three two, regarding, he was thanking us for the Town of Shrewsbury Scholarship. Mr. Lee will be attending Boston University in the fall, he'll be studying computer science and neuroscience, so good luck to Mr. Lee, so noted. Next item is, correspondence, email dated July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one from Jackie Pratt, Selco, Director of Integrated Resources and Communications, regarding Selco announces Net Zero Roadmap. We saw a lot of that presented to us, to us early today, that was outstanding news. So noted. Next item is an email dated July twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one from David Kelly and Cynthia Kelly, Seventy-One Janet Circle, regarding to Janet Circle, so noted. Next item is email dated July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one from Jay O. Lazzott, David J. Lazzott, Jr., and James D. Heald, Fifteen Colton Lane, regarding requesting permission for the Tenth Annual Turkey Trot for the Memory, twenty-twenty-one. So noted. Mr. Mizikar, would that go on our next agenda? Going to maintain a request for approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is email dated July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one from Robert Ryan, A Colonial Drive, regarding a request for proclamation under Policy Thirty, which we've since amended. We'll do a proclamation for an Eagle Scout ceremony on August fifteenth at one-thirty, so noted. Email, next item is an email dated July thirtieth from Puni Kohli, President of India Society of Worcester, regarding invitation to India Day, August seventh, at India Center Shrewsbury, which a couple members of the board attended, so noted. Thank you very much for the invitation. Next item is an email dated August second, twenty-twenty-one from Missy Hollenbeck, thirty-eight Stony Hill Road, regarding Mass Library Systems climate preparedness week, so noted. Next item is a letter dated, excuse me, letter received, August second, twenty-twenty-one from Janet Pierce, Executive Director, Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, regarding appointment of delegate and alternate to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year twenty-two. So this also would be, I think, on next agenda, on our next agenda on the twenty-fourth, so noted. Email twenty, number twenty-three, email dated August second, twenty-twenty-one from Todd P. Maury, P. Vice President, Beal's Associates, Inc., regarding Centec Park North, notice of, MEPA notice of project change, so noted. Next item is email dated August third from Suzanne Shaw, Thirty Main Boulevard, regarding request for a speed monitor on Washington Street. We owe Ms. Shaw a response on that, just on the status. She is on the list, we have responded once, we're just getting more clarity exactly what the next steps are, so I'll take that action, just to get back to Ms. Shaw. We owe her a response, given the time of delay, sorry for that. So noted. And then I will take the next items from twenty-five to forty-eight, they're all ZBA decisions, from May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one through ZBA decisions of July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, so noted. So that is all that's on the agenda for this evening, and if there's nothing else to discuss, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. I've been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us. Have a good night, see you on the twenty-fourth.